...Board of Trustees, and it is Tuesday, March the 30th, 2010. I would ask our Administrator if you please call a roll.
Trustee Cawthon?
Here.
President Klein?
Here.
Trustee O'Brien-Berglin?
Here.
Senator?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Whalen?
Here.
Zappa?
Nancy.
Thank you Gloria. We have minutes from our March 2nd Board meeting. I would ask if, I would entertain a motion to accept these minutes as written, and then we can discuss any recommended changes.
So moved.
Second. Thank you Sandra. Thank you Darrell. Are there any corrections, additions, edits? If not, all in favor of the motion to accept these meeting minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item number three is comments from the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to make the Board aware of any topics or issues or opportunities not on tonight's agenda. And I need to tell you right up front that what I would like you to do is identify yourself by name and your address, and understand that if it's not on the agenda, we cannot respond to it. We can accept and take in your comments and do research and get back to you later.
You want me to answer that?
Excuse me?
Want me to answer that last part? You never answered the last time I was up here.
Would you please identify yourself?
Fred Butky, 542 Sixth Street, North Hudson, Wisconsin. Lived there all my life. I got about three items I'd like to bring up. I know you're not going to like it because you heard me earlier. And I talk a little loud because I'm hard of hearing. They say they can hear me out in the street, but I can't help it. I'm hard of hearing, so that's the way I do it. First of all, I want to know, are you people, can the people vote down not to fix Lars Ass's road, and you guys fix it anyway? Second one is...
Which road was that?
Lars Ass, the ex-president. And then you make the guys down in Gellihead put in water and sewer, but you don't make him put it in, but you fix his road anyway. The second item is, let me see, I forgot it. I'm so damn mad, I forgot. (laughing). I gotta look. Oh yeah, Lars Ass had a past as he only spent so much money to fix roads. The village voted in. You guys threw it out. Now you don't have a minimum on what you can spend. You can do anything you want with my money. Don't have to account for it. And then the real reason, wait a minute, when I'm done, I got, last time I was talking, you guys told me I interrupted you. Don't interrupt me either. I've got just as much right as you have. Remember the last meeting? You guys told me not to interrupt. You said, "Don't interrupt me until I'm done." And I probably won't be back for another year. And the other item is, I was wondering why you spend all this money up on 10th Street for sidewalk in. I live on Sixth Street. I have nothing done to that in the last 50 years. I'd like to have water, curb and gutter and sidewalks where I can walk up to the bank. Oh no, they won't fix my street, but they'll fix somebody else's up on 10th Street. 10 kids go to school, five walk on the sidewalk, five walk on the other side. Now, the guy lives up there. He says, "I don't know what the hell they put the sidewalk in for Fred." I said, "I'm going down and find out." And I guess that's about all I got to say, and thank you for taking the time with me.
I would so wanted to have answered some of those issues, but is there anyone else here who would like to address the Board? Number four is new business from the Board or staff, the President's comments, and I do have a few things that I would like to share with the public this evening. First of all, recognition of Sandra Whalen's service. Sandra served two, actually three, non-consecutive terms. Isn't that right Sandra? Sandra has served on Public Works Committee, the Historic Preservation Committee, and a Public Welfare Committee. And Sandra, this was quite a nice article that I read in the Hudson Star Observer last week on page 13A. And we wish you all the luck in the world, and we thank you for your service to this community.
Well, thank you. I didn't realize John was going to surprise me with a whole article. I thought it was just a few comments, but thanks John. And that's not my real age.[298.41][298.41](Laughter).
What did it say, 29?
Yeah.
But thank you Sandra, and I appreciate your offer to continue to work with the staff on the website.
Among other things George.
Among other things.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. We're charging into the 21st century, like it or not.
Mr. Chairman, applause would be appropriate.
I think it would be. Thank you Darrell.[326.41][326.41](Applause). The next item on my little, my own little agenda here is recognition of Becky Millbrand, our clerk. Now Becky didn't know I was going to be doing this, so, but that's too bad Becky, I'm going to do it anyway. By the Regional Director of the 2010 Census Bureau for her work on providing information on their new construction program. I got a personal letter from that Director, and it acknowledges receipt of these materials that she put together for the census. It was a lot of work, I know. And Becky has been the point person when it came to distribution of the stuff that the Census Bureau has sent us. I'm not going to, she asked me not to let her speak on this for fear of what she might really say. So I will do some of that for her. Behind me, there is a poster. "We received approximately 50 of these posters, and anyone who would like one, please stop by the office. Becky will be glad to give you enough for an entire classroom." There's that many. For the first about 15 people who come up to Becky's window tomorrow, I'm sure they'll be gone in no time at all, you two, you two can have a canvas backpack in honor of the 2010 census. If you'd like, we can also give you a paper clip dispenser, a six-foot metal tape, a travel mug, and I think we still have a few black t-shirts left. For those who haven't filled out their census form yet, just for the sake of the meeting here tonight, I did make a copy of mine. And when they say it takes 10 minutes, if it takes you 10 minutes to fill out this one page, we need to have a little chat. Everybody I've talked to said they did it in less than three. It asks such personal questions. The most personal question on here was when you were you born. And that's all I got to say about the census. The 2010 calendar for recycling events for St. Croix County is now available at the St. Croix County website. I've given a copy of the printout of the information that I got from Jennifer Havens at the recycling facility, and I'm sure that John will be printing that in the Hudson Star Observer, John? Will you do that for us? Okay. And if you'd like to, that calendar of recycling events, read it there. Also, Earth Day Celebration 2010 for St. Croix County is coming up on Sunday, April 18th, from noon to 4:00, and that's hosted at the YMCA Camp St. Croix. That was in the same memo that I got from Jennifer. Earth Day. The North Hudson Village Reorganization Meeting is scheduled for April 20th. The only business that we conduct at that meeting is, as the name implies, reorganization. It's when we all, when everyone receives their, I'll call them assignments, for the next year. Among other, few other things we do, but we don't conduct the type of business that we would at a regular Board meeting. On the May 4th Agenda, I'll be requesting approval of moving the June 1st meeting to June 8th. If you look at the calendar, the June 1st meeting would come the day after Memorial Day. There are a lot of people who are away, and I'm anticipating some of the Board members will also be away, and so we can, if the Board approves, we'll move it to the next week. And finally, I'm going to have to move Agenda Item Number 7, which is the Plan Commission, to sometime after 8 o'clock to accommodate John from S&amp;N Land Surveying. So I just want you to be aware of those, what I would call relatively minor changes. All right. Next on the Item B would be Administrator's comments. Gloria?
Just to update the residents, that there is a burning ban on right now, so we aren't able to issue any building, or burning permits until the Fire Chief lifts that ban. And just to kind of update the Board, that the budget planning module will be up and running on Monday of next week, and we'll be working hard to get all that ready so that we can start on our next year's budget already. That's all we have.
When Gloria told me about this, you were pretty excited about that. It's going to make your job a whole lot easier, which means that it becomes easier for us as Board members to watch the budget more closely. Item C, Becky, you're on.
Okay. The only comments I have is just another reminder about the election next Tuesday, which is April 6th. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., so we encourage everybody to come in and vote in the election. And then the, and it is also still, you can still vote by absentee, and then you can also register to vote at this point, so feel free to do that at the Clerk's window there here at the Village Hall. And the second item is in reference to garbage tags. If you have any unused garbage tags from Waste Management, which was our previous garbage hauler, you can still return those tags to the Village Hall here for a refund. And the deadline to do that will be April 30th. So return your unused Waste Management garbage tags and yard waste tags to the Village Hall for a refund until April 30th.
Thank you Becky.
That's all I have.
Okay. Item number five, we have a request for an amended Class B/Class B liquor license for extended premises for the Malloo Inn for the Spring Motorcycle Run. Any comments, questions after the motion is made? This is the same one that's come before you every year about this time. I see...
I don't see a recommended motion, but I would move that we approve the extended premise request for April 10th, 2010, for the Malloo Inn.
Subject to probably these items, if the Chief is recommended.
Oh, do I run all of those named off in there too?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'll be happy to do that. I would, then I'll do this formally. I recommend approval of the upcoming request with the following conditions, similar to the prior 2009 request. One, the area outside of the building to be completely enclosed with a secure, not vinyl fence, accessed only from within the building. Use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced-in area. Number two, use of the outside area only with specific permission of the Village Board for each particular date and event. The April 10th, 2010 event to be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Three, the owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot area is fenced during time of event. Four, four North Hudson Police Officers and three St. Croix County Deputies to be on duty during the hours of event at owner's expense, to be billed to the owner by the Village. Having the additional officers on foot at the event will provide adequate visibility to deter unlawful activity. Five, the owner to provide adequate satellite restroom facilities. Six, Wisconsin Street North from Sixth Street North to Third Street North to be closed to through traffic from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with an open corridor for emergency vehicles maintained. Surrounding neighbors to be notified in advance by the Village. Actual times of detour route are to be at the discretion of the commanding North Hudson Police Department Officer on scene. Seven, and final, the payment for the Village Services must be made within 30 days after the event.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Item number six, this is a public hearing on a special assessment for public improvement along 10th Street North and Summers Street North. And I believe we begin this with opening the, a motion to open the public hearing. Is that correct?
And I so move.
Thank you Darrell. Kevin, you want to lead the forum?
All right. Started off, Village Board at the last, their last meeting actually adopted the prelim resolution, kind of starts the whole process for a project they, they looked at, Public Works Committee looked at last fall for approval to look at constructing this year. And we're looking at the 10th Street project, which is from Michelson to Summers Street, and a portion of Summers Street, which is from the intersection of 10th Street to the east approximately 250 feet. And along with that, we have to generate a assessment report, a preliminary assessment report, which a copy should have been sent out to the affected property owners. And I believe the Village Board has a copy of that also. So I'll just kind of go in this, summarize, just hit some of the key points as part of the report. I guess with this project, we're going to be looking at doing some storm sewer improvements. There is history of some drainage problems mainly at Summers and 10th Street. If you look up that intersection, there really isn't much for surface drains in that area. There is quite a bit of drainage that does come off from the northeast with all the development that's happened in that area. The closest catch base along Summers Street is basically up by Deer Park Road. And so it's about a 1,200 or 1,300-foot section in there where the drainage eventually gets down to the intersection. So we're going to be looking at doing some improvements in that, in that area. The street reconstruct, like I talked, the brunt of the work is going to be from Michelson to Summers. There's currently about two inches of asphalt and about four to six inches of crust agri underneath that roadway. And it has a Pacer rating of three or four, which is fairly, fairly low, and I'm sure you can see how the surface is wearing significant aging. It's over 20 years old. I think the plating looks like it was done in early 1970. So the road itself is 30, 40 years old. So it's getting to a point where it's going to need a pavement replacement. We're looking at the curb, pretty good shape, so we're going to be looking at leaving that in place. There will be some spot replacements for, for the inlets per se, but the majority of the curb is going to be staying in place. And then the asphalt, we're going to be looking at doing what they call pulverize, bringing a big piece of machinery in that'll grind up the asphalt and mix in the agri that's underneath the crust agri base, and reuse that before the pavement is put back down. So as part of the Village's assessment policy, the street reconstruct is assessed to the adjoining property owners. Since it's over 20 years old, there'll be a 50/50 split. 50% will be picked up by the Village, and 50% will be by the residents that are abut the property. The storm sewer, according to current policy, that's not assessed. The Village will be picking up that entire cost for those improvements.
So given the only, the only part, and I say only, please understand, I'm not minimizing it. The only part then that the resident picks up is half of the cost of, shall we say, the asphalt.
Yep. Yep. And then when we go into the report per se, item, or the page number four, it gives you, you know, all the different property owners that will be affected. There's 30 different parcels, and policy-wise, it'll be assessed on a front footage. There are some credits that are given for some of the parcels that are on corner lots. For this particular section, there was two of them that did get a corner lot credit, and that was on Summers and 10th Street, the northeast corner and the southeast corner. The first 150 feet of the long frontage is forgiven, and that's given as a credit, so. And then item page number five gives you an idea of what we're projecting. Again, these are projected costs. We haven't actually gone out and gotten quotes from the, from the contractors. We're assuming if this was approved tonight, that we're looking at bidding the project out on 16th of April, so.
I noticed that the estimated costs come within $250 of our $150,000 limit. Will our, when you send this out for bid, will you make it very clear to the proposal, or to the contractors that we do have this limit?
Yep.
Thank you.
There'll actually be something that's on the bid sheet per se, a line item at the bottom that, you know, the Village is restricted up to a total fee of $150,000, which includes construction and design, engineering. That's total project cost. So that'll be spelled out in the bid, the bid form, so they're aware of it.
How many contractors do you propose sending out the bids to?
We have a list per se that we send out the advertisement out to, some of the people that we typically work with. You know, the projects that we've bid out so far, we're seeing six, six, seven different contractors that'll actually submit bids on the project. So there's a lot of interest for, for work that is out there, obviously, just the way the economy is, so.
Kevin, even though we are receiving approximately $16,200 of Eldred funds...
Yep.
...that would not factor into the cost of the project at the time we bid it?
Nope.
And that's a later reimbursement, is what I mean, so.
Yep. The Village would have to pick up the initial cost, and then as you get towards the end of the project, then you would ask for the reimbursement from, from the DOT, from the So when we look at opinion probable costs, page number five gives you an idea of, you know, what the breakout, how much the street reconstruct is going to be, along with the storm sewer. And then we have a contingency amount, which we put in 5%. That just gives you a little bit of a factor for some of the unforeseen things when you actually go through and bid the project out. So we have a 5% amount figured in for there. So like what George was saying, we came up with an opinion probable cost of just 150, under $150,000. So you do have a contingency amount in there. So we're envisioning that the cost is going to be coming in under that threshold.
If all of the bids came in above that number, would we just curtail some of the, where would we cut back? In other words, would it be down at the, oh, that'd be the south end, or would it be up around the north end? What do we do?
We were looking at, as part of the base bid, we were, right now you have a two-inch asphalt layer out, that's out there. We'd like to see a three-inch that's put in place. We're going to have an alternate in there of a two-and-a-half inch thickness, just to see where that number comes in. So we have, you know, somewhat of an option that's presented to us that, you know, maybe with the three-inch, it's going to put us over the 150, while with the two-and-a-half, it puts us under. It just gives us a little bit of flexibility. And that's something that those bid results will be brought forth at the Public Works meeting and discussed before the Village Board.
Thank you.
And then page, page number six is, depending on what the prospective assessments are going to be for the parcels that are affected, gives you an idea of what they have for an option. Either, you know, if they want to pay it upfront, not upfront, but the time that they, the bill is sent out, or they can do a deferment, depending on how much that assessment is going to be over a three, four, or five-year period. It's, it's all spelled out in that particular table on page number six. And then page seven gives you an idea of assessment rate, how much per foot it's going to cost, and it's just under $15, $14.45 per foot for the street reconstruct. And then if I can defer you to, page number nine gets into the Schedule C, it's part of the report. That gives you a breakdown of all the individual tax ID numbers, property owners, their addresses, front footage, accessible front footage, and then their perspective assessment for, for the property. And if you look down through, the majority of the costs are going to be between $1,300 to $1,400. And again, that's an estimate, estimated dollar amount. Once the project is completed, we'll have to go through a final assessment report. And what we like to see happen is, is once we do have the final numbers in, it's, you know, they would be slightly under what the, these figures are, is what we would hope for.
So they would all fall within the five years? That assessment could be spread out then over a five-year period according to policy?
Yep. The majority of them. There are a couple parcels in there.
It looks like the majority fall within that range.
Yep. And then Appendix A just gives you, just a little more of a breakout of all the particular items that are going to be part of the project, between, you know, traffic control or pavement, storm sewer items, you know, how many linear feet of pipe with what size pipes we're going to be putting in. Just, you know, a little more of a breakout. And what I have here tonight then, just to give you kind of a schematic, like we talked about, the majority of the work is going to be storm sewer improvements.
Would you grab the mic? No, the mic comes out of there if you want to hold it. Thank you.
So like we indicated before, the majority of the work is going to be storm sewer improvements, and it's going to be along the north side of 10th Street. You know, the allfall comes into the Village's parkland, so we're going to be putting a 24-inch reinforced concrete pipe. There is an existing 15-inch reinforced concrete pipe that we're going to leave in place. As you can see, it's underneath the curb and gutter, and we're trying to minimize the amount of disturbance. We're actually going to be using that as kind of an overflow. If this particular pipe for some reason gets surcharged, you would still have that 15-inch in place. And up on the northern end with the intersection, we have one new inlet going in on the southeast corner, and then two on the southeast. And then farther up to the east along Summers, we'd be running another pipe where there's going to be three additional inlets that'll be placed. Prior to the driveway that goes into 702 10th Street, because apparently there's a passagier street where the water gets up to a certain level and kind of back drains into their, into their garage area. So we're trying to intercept that, that storm water before it gets to that point. So anybody has any questions?
We have some residents here.
Sure. You're adding a 24-inch sewer pipe under there, so the 15-inch existing pipe is going to be just overflow, is everything? I guess that was interesting.
Yep. Yep. It'll be there just in case, you know, this particular pipe was the surcharge. I mean, it's been designed for 10 years storm event. That's typically what you look at for, for design standards, because if you get, you know, up to like a 25, or 50, or 100-year, the pipe size just gets to be pretty expensive. So that's where you typically, you know, the roadway will actually carry some of that additional drainage, will continue down, down the street to some of the road spots. But yeah, the 15-inch will stay in place, and then that 24-inch will be installed along with it. And again, there's, there's nothing, not a passagier street with any issues with the sanitary sewer or water mains, so those, those won't, those won't be replaced.
Anyone else?
Sure.
Did you do a study on the blacktop from two-inch to three-inch? Which one lasted longest?
Um, I mean, I've seen, you know, 10 years ago, two-inch was pretty standard.
I didn't ask you that. Which one lasted longest?
We would like to see a three-inch if we could. I mean, this particular street, the fortunate thing, there isn't a lot of traffic. the fortunate thing, there isn't a lot of traffic. There isn't a lot of heavy vehicles on this str- you know, heavy truck vehicles that are used. So, you know.
Wouldn't you get better for your, about the two inch one or three inch one? If you shorten the road and you got three inch and it lasted thirty years, you did the whole thing and you put two inch and only lasted ten years, you're better off to go with three inch and you shorten the road, wouldn't you?
You know, I don't think you're going to see a big difference between a two and a half and a three inch.
You don't know which one, how long it's going to last then.
Well, I mean, you look at this one, this was a two inch and it lasted forty years. Typically, streets that I see, kind of a twenty-year period is usually what, you know, longevity of it is. So.
Do you have sidewalks on that street?
Nope. No sidewalks. So the fortunate thing within the village, you have a nice granular sub base, which really helps out with, you know, longevity of the, the roads around this area. When you get off to the, uh, to the east, when you get in the heavier clay, clay areas, um, you get a lot of more movement with the pavement. That's typically where you see where they'll, fail a little bit quicker than what you would see over in this area.
How long do you expect the project to take?
Um, I'm envisioning, you know, the majority of the work would be done month and a half to two months at the most. I would think we would be able to start around June.
Are you going to rip up all of Tenth Street prior to the, uh, at the beginning of the contract? Or are you going to do the sewer project first and then rip up the rest of Tenth Street?
What, what, what they would do is they'd actually come in and pulverize everything right away. And then up in this particular area, they'll have to actually salvage that material. So they'll strip off the top, um, the mixture of the asphalt and gravel and stockpile it in one area. And then they'll come in and actually get the pipe work, which a project like this is probably only about a week's worth of pipe work. And then, you know, backfill it, get it up to grade, and then put that salvage material back over the top of the sub grade.
I envision them like Hudson with their eleventh street project, where it was supposed to take a short time and will be ripped up for a second number of months.
Yeah. I mean, if we were doing like a sewer and water project, then yeah, it's going to be a lot drawn out process. This, I mean, there really isn't a lot of underground pipe work here. It's, like I said, I, I envision it's only about a week's worth of work.
And the people who are affected by that pipe work, are they going to be able to get to access their driveways during that time?
Yep.
Or they're going to fill in the hole where they're digging down for the new sewer pipe? I mean, just going to refill that every night and then empty it out every morning?
Yeah. To, I mean, there's going to be some periods where you're not going to have access to your driveway. Um, the contractor will notify you, but at the end of the day, they will have everything backfilled for you to get in, you know, in, in, into your business per se. So.
You should make it clear, Kevin, that the storm sewer isn't like regular sewer. It's a lot shallower.
Yep.
And the amount that we have to, that laid goes relatively quickly. It's not more than four feet on, on, on the hole. The rest of the work is all surface work.
Yep.
Like on, like on, uh, Tenth Street. So it's just come in, grind it off. It might be a little dusty for a while and that'll be probably the extent of it. So it should move along pretty quickly.
Yep.
Is there anyone else has any comments or questions? This is your time to ask. Yes, sir.
Some years ago, they used to come in and name the streets in North Hudson, put a board here, but it seemed like it had stopped. And the streets started to all fall apart. Is there a plan for maintenance program in North Hudson to continue that when they put down that, what do you call it?
Seal coating.
Yeah. They used to do that all the time. And the streets stayed, it seems like a lot of our streets are just falling apart up here because of that. Cut this board, but got a few boards going up. I don't know why they quit doing that.
Trying to catch up.
Plan to keep the streets up so you don't have to spend this kind of money. Not only the homeowners, but the taxpayers are paying for all this stuff doing that in the long run for you.
Spending about the same amount of money, Roger.
Doing this would not eliminate?
We can't increase it much to keep, to keep taxes in line. We, we, it's a, it's an ongoing discussion. Every year we'd like to do more. There's no doubt about it. But it, I don't think it's safe to say we're doing less. Tenth Street, one reason there, it had been much done there is because it's been on the capital projects list for about five years to get to. So we kind of just kept waiting for a time where we felt it was time to do it. So, um, it may have been neglected and not, we, before, but I know at least the last five, six years, a reason we haven't put any money into it because we knew it had to be replaced, um, relatively soon.
Because of the storm sewer maintenance?
No, just because we, we knew it had to be redone and we didn't want to spend any money on seal coating because that would have been a real waste of money. So we're, it, it opened up this year. There wasn't anything else more pressing, if you will. But there, I'd be honest with you, there's not a real scientific plan each year either. It's a lot, what money's available and, um, and what happens to pop up during the course of the year that may need attention first.
But seal coating is very expensive with many.
Seal. Well, every, relative, relative to what?
To redoing it.
Well, no, nobody's a matter of how much we, um, I believe our budget stays about the same with that.
Largest thing with seal coating is once the street gets into such a, such a condition, you're basically, you are throwing money away by doing the seal coating of the street and, uh, Tenth Street for the last five years. Basically, you've done nothing but just basic backfilling it. So hot patchy and stuff like that. Uh, it's just at the point where with the storm problems we had, especially down at Summer Street area and coming up from up the park, with water issues, the standing, I mean, you know, the ice that flowed out sits in there during the winter time, stuff like that. It just came to a point where we were actually wasting taxpayer dollars by trying to seal coat that street. So that's why I was putting a five-year capital project list to basically take care of storm problem and also give you a new surface.
Um, I'll ask either Kevin or Mark, either of you, would you like to comment on the Pacer? I mean, we do that on a pretty much annual basis.
The Pacer's done every two years.
Every two, every other year.
Two years.
And a lot of this is driven by the Pacer Report. The Pacer, I don't remember what the acronym stands for, but it's, uh, it's checking the condition of the roads.
Yeah, it's.
Real quick.
It's based on, you know, it's from one to ten.
Yeah.
And there's kind of, there's a book that the DOT kind of uses as a guideline. And for the village, actually, Mark goes out, um, every two years and actually rates them. He has some photos in there that gives you an idea of what's, you know, what we should be rating. Obviously, like a new reconstruct after this project is done, that would be brought up to a ten. So it just gives you an idea of what, depending on the numbering system, what the community should be looking at, whether crack fillings, um, seal coating, or doing a total reconstruct. It's up to a point where there's, like Mark was saying, you're throwing bad dollars. That's something that's not feasible.
How many roads got the seal coating this, or planned for this year? Remember, or last year?
Basically, what it is, I have a, uh, we have a, basically what we do is I go out, identify streets that are in need of it and, you know, so basically we try to get budget numbers for as much as we can be done. Like this year, there was three streets that were not done last year. That'll be on, basically, it'll be the Helen Street, the Helen Street Partridge, Deer Path, and then all the little streets, cul-de-sacs that come off them. But again, that money will be set by how budget figures come in, how much actually gets done.
We're also limited on that by the size of the budget. Do the best we can with the bucks we got. It's basically what it boils down to.
Yeah.
Joe?
What you said was e- exactly right, though, is if you spend the money on street maintenance, that is very, very cost effective in letting those streets run forty years or thereabouts. If you don't maintain them, if you don't crackfill them, if you don't seal coat them, then they don't last as long. And then you got to go through this reconstruction project. And that is expensive. And so we, we talk about that every year during budget time of how much we can fit into the budget for seal coating and crackfilling to maintain the streets. And all I can tell you is it, it really gets the attention and it's tough to get as much as we want. I don't know that we've ever gotten in our budget as much dollars devoted to seal coating as what we wanted to do. And I, you know, for as long as I've been here anyway. But you're exactly right. Exactly right. If you maintain it, it'll last longer. You don't have to reconstruct it. And it's very cost effective for the residents as well as, as well as, uh, the village. We'd like to do more.
Now, mind you, when we go into the budget, if you're not familiar, we, I think that it's safe to say the general anticipation is, is we go for a zero increase. So, you know, you, you, the budget theoretically, you can make it whatever you want, but we try to go in for a zero increase each year. So when we refer to the budget, it's just based on the previous year, not try to increase any more than we have to. Because there are some things that increase regardless of what, uh, our say in the matter or North Hudson control.
It'll be interesting to see what happens. You know, we had a big run-up in oil costs in the last couple of years, particular in two thousand and eight, I believe. I don't know what's happened to asphalt prices during the last year. My guess is they've, they've had to have leveled off, if not dropped a little bit.
Yeah, they've, based on what I've been seeing from the previous bids, they're a little bit elevated from what I've seen last fall. Um, that's why, you know, we need to have some flexibility.
How was last fall compared to the year before? Were they down?
Well, just, you know, lately with way the fuel prices have gone up a little bit. Seems like to spring.
I'm just saying, we had four dollar fuel here in two thousand and eight.
Yep.
That, that year. I don't know whether we've got any benefit from that. It's, it's hard to see things go down in price, unfortunately.
All right. Is there anyone else? While we have this, this is a public hearing and it's your opportunity. So if anybody else has any questions or comments before we close it, Roger?
These, these figures that you sent out, they're just estimated figures. They're not.
You're correct.
What you're hoping for the bid to come in.
You're, you're correct, Roger. And that's why I asked Kevin.
Yeah.
We all hope for a little lower.
We do have a contingency.
Kevin is our village engineer. Uh, he and his firm, Cedar Corporation, are very knowledgeable as far as what it's going to cost per foot and per depth. They do this all the time. So we rely on them and they're very good at this. Uh, they come up and tell us pretty much fairly accurate on this is what we think it's going to cost. But you're absolutely right. We won't know until the bids come in. And when are you going to ask for those bids to be back?
April sixteenth.
April sixteenth. Then we'll have the bids and we'll know. Okay? Gene, was it, did I see your hand? Okay.
Yeah, can.
They will be brought forth at the Public Works.
Yeah, we've got, we've got to approve that bid. And then upon completion of the construction project, then when we've got all of the costs in there, and there may be some things that are subtracted from it, then Kevin comes back in with the actual dollar amount of that project and will give all of you another sheet with the actual number that you will be obligated for.
Final assessment report.
Then we shouldn't have any more problems with flooding or anything, right? And if we do?
I wouldn't say that. You, you should be, you said it was based on a ten-year event.
Right. I mean, if you're going to get an extreme, six inches of rain in twenty-four hours, I mean, you're going to see some of the streets flooded. I mean, it's not going to be in this, not only in this area, but throughout the whole community.
But I know that now, when it rains really hard, it just, right now, and it doesn't hold it at all.
You've got to go all across the street.
Yeah. And that's why we.
You know, typically at the intersections, we're used to just put one inlet, the police quadrant, um.
It goes by any guy.
Put trees.
It goes over the curve and into a.
Three up at, at that spot. Just trying to be real conservative on it.
Yeah. Well, yeah, Kevin and the engineering organization and Public Works is trying to fix that. It'll be better. Lots better.
Never say never.
When will we see the first charge to a expense for?
Well, the bid's coming back, as Kevin just said, uh.
He's on their, on their recovery.
April sixteenth.
To pay anything.
It won't be till this fall.
Yeah. It'll be next year's property tax bill.
It'll be next year.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. Darrell?
It wouldn't, it would be on next year.
Next year's, yeah.
On the property tax.
If that's the option that you take, you'll, you'll have, um, three different options. One is to pay it upfront. Two is to have the total amount put on your property tax bill. And then three would be to, um, divide it up over the four years at a, um, a interest rate that would be whatever the village gets plus one point five percent. And we usually get a pretty decent, um, rate.
So was it the, if, if we were paying the total amount, that would be, we'd see that in December or January or?
If you have it put on your taxes, yes. And that would be interest-free if you pay it upfront. If you pay it before it goes on your taxes, which you have the option to do, then again, there would be no interest on that.
And this will all be spelled out in a, in a letter from?
Yeah, after we get the final, final number, the final assessment report, then we'll be able to put that, um, that, those options in the mail to you.
Is it safe to say that most people wait until they get their tax statement from the village that shows their property tax and their assessments? And then they make a decision then on when to pay? Or do they have to do that before?
They do it before so I know whether to turn it on in the taxes.
Okay. Then it's not safe to say. Thank you.
Will there be, you have, you have to pay that full amount by January thirty-first? Or can you split it into two installments like we do January and July?
Um, normally assessments go on the first in, uh, installment by the January thirty-first or?
If someone were making the monthly payments and they happen to move in that four-year period, would though, would they have to just take care of that bill before they left? Or would the next homeowner take over that or?
Well, yeah, it was an annual payment. So if, if you put it on your taxes, you'd get it once a year when you got your tax bill. And, um, normally at closing, they do require that, um, but that it could be something that was negotiated between the buyer and the seller.
It certainly is listed as an obligation. Depends on between you and the seller, what happens there.
I bought my house with assessments. Miss Summer Street had just gotten done when I happened to buy it and I assumed the assessments.
I appreciate all the work that was been put into this.
Thank you.
All the people that have done, I'm going to give this to this one.
Mostly our engineer here.
Thank you.
Any more? That was a very nice note to end on. Thank you.
That's rare. Do you mind saying that again? Thank you.
Uh, Kevin, uh, I think at this time, it is my, uh, obligation to close the public hearing or ask for a.
Yep.
Okay. And then I'm going to ask you another question when we do, when I do get that motion to close the hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So am I.
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Thank you, Darrell. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Can you agree by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. We did things a little bit different this time. Um, and that is, we approved the resolution. It was Resolution Number twenty-ten dash zero-one, uh, for this project. And, uh, I see my signature on here. That was from the last meeting. As I understand it, there is no other action that's necessary at this time. Is that correct?
Um, I guess, I don't know, in the past, we've actually adopted the preliminary assessment report. That's the only thing that I would suggest.
Was that what the resolution had done?
Yeah.
Um, that actually starts. Starts the whole process for us to look at doing the preliminary assessment report.
Right.
So it's kind of the first piece.
So you want us to.
Why don't we make a motion?
Yeah, to adopt the preliminary assessment.
Then it'll be clean.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, report from the village engineer of the, uh, preliminary special assessment report dated March fifteenth, two thousand and ten.
And I'll second that. I think that'll be cleaner then. And there will be no.
No question.
No question about the legality of this. Okay. Um, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this, just to keep it completely clean. I'll start with Jim.
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
George, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. And thank you, folks, for coming out and, um, asking your questions and.
You're welcome to stay and.
Oh, yeah.
Listen to the rest if you want. We can understand that you have other things to do, but it's up to you.
We don't. We don't, I... It'd be more fun, we gotta be here, so we gotta stay.
You're okay, looking for an out.
Mike is here. Mike's here, but the surveyors are not.
Yeah, I don't think we have the...
Looks like there'll be a ninety-second...
Personnel, finance. That went very well. Very professional presentation.
Yeah, I guess we could do, I was looking at...
It was just like that, too. People came in, they looked so serious, and they started asking these questions, and they went, "Okay, that's really cool, great, thanks for doing it."
Okay, as, as I had indicated at the outset of the meeting, um, we will hold off item number seven, and we'll go directly to item number eight, Personnel and Finance Committee. So if you will flip to that section of your manual. We've got some bills that we need paying, and the, uh, Finance Committee did make a recommendation that we pay our bills this month, so I'll entertain a motion, Joe, you wanna read that again?
Sure, I, I recommend that we approve the March two thousand and ten non-recurring claims totaling twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions about the bills? If not, let's start, let's do a roll call vote, since we're spending money, we'll start down there with Mr. Zappa.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, we've paid our bills. Uh, the next item, uh, a couple of personal property tax write-offs, every once in a while, it becomes efficient, if nothing else, to write off a property tax, and you see, one of these is for a whopping eighteen dollars and thirty cents, and the other one is for two hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents, you have that information in front of you, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second. Wasn't sure, uh...
Uh, the motion that, um, I think I heard was move that the village administrator be authorized to write off two hundred and sixty-one dollars and six cents in personal property tax uncollectible, is that, was that the motion I heard?
Yep.
Recommend do.
Okay. Because this has to do with money, I'll entertain a roll call vote, and this time we'll start with, uh, Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
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 Okay. The next one has to do with, um, a bond renewal, and Gloria, I'll give you the floor on this one, see if you can explain that this is an, uh, a regular item.
Um, the last time that we had this come up for renewal, it was three years ago, and, um, it was like nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars for three years, and it has increased by about fifteen dollars, um, and it also covers another three years, but it, it's required by state statute for the, um, the clerk of court, the village president, the deputy treas, uh, treasurer, village clerk, um, administrative assistant for the PD, um, the village administrator, and the municipal judge, um, the judge is definitely by, uh, state statute, and, um, just to have that coverage in case of fraud or, and also, which we've never had any problem, and we have good, uh, systems in place, but it is something that is required.
Any questions?
I would, uh, move to approve the three-year blanket bond from, uh, Ohio Casualty, providing fifty thousand dollars in coverage with a five hundred dollar deductible, to include the faithful performance provision and the depositor's forgery coverage, not to exceed one thousand and two dollars for three years of coverage.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments? Money roll call. We'll start with Mark down far in.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 And finally, we have a Resolution Number twenty-ten dash zero-four. Gloria wanted to add another title, um, to her long list of titles, and so we're gonna make her a deputy tonight, if it's all right with you folks. The issue here is we need a deputy...
Better explain what kind of deputy.
Oh, you mean, I'm not gonna get a gun? Come on, Mark!
So we'll start with deputy clerk, and then eventually we'll make you a deputy sheriff.
Sure.
Okay, Mark, are you stretching, or you have, oh, I'm sorry, you gotta...
No, don't stop at my account.
No, all kidding aside, we like to have some fun here once in a while, Gloria, would you just explain why you need to be a deputy clerk?
Basically with, um, Becky becoming the village clerk, um, there needs to be a backup for her when she's out of the office or unavailable, um, for elections, um, if someone comes in to absentee vote, we would need to be able to initial ballots and, um, other items that are, is really designated to the, to the clerk, but it would be a backup for that person in her absence.
Okay, any questions on that? Well, I guess we need a motion, don't we? Would someone care to make a...
I approve Resolution Number two, zero, one, zero, dash, zero, four, Resolution of going to be a treasurer as administrator slash treasurer slash deputy clerk.
Thank you.
Second.
Gloria, any other question, any further questions? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? All right. It's almost eight o'clock, now what do you think? We'll go on to, with the Public Works? What do you think, Mike?
We're waiting for somebody yet, aren't we? Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll go on to Public, how about Public Works? We got through that too fast, Gloria.
I know, we're afraid that we're gonna go to...
All yours, Darrell.
One of the things I'd just like to mention, uh, that we discussed at the last Public Works meeting was the draft of the utility permit that we had in front of this board last month, it was referred back to Public Works for some further review after discussion. Our recommendation is that we go ahead and send it to Terry for legal review prior to it coming back here, um, I don't think the motion is necessary, but, uh, George, if there's no objection, our recommendation is we forward it on to Terry and let him take a look at it, and we're fine with it, um, and I think that consensus of the board was that they're fine with the concept, and Terry will, then on the back here is...
Oh, it's okay with us, how about you, Terry?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. I was seeing him nodding his head, thinking, you know, billable hours.
Yeah, I signed those, those checks the other day.
Nobody's exempt from being hassled here.
No, that's fair. It's all fair.
We did have some, uh, items that did result in, uh, action and recommendations from the Public Works meeting to this board, uh, the first one is the Storm Sewer Utility Fund, you'll recall, and I think our, our viewers at home will recall the specialment we've had at a previous meeting, coming from Cedar Corporation, the establishment of the ERU, the environmental, or the equivalent runoff ERU, remember all my acronyms here, and we did establish that in the village at thirty-five hundred feet, what the next step would be, and came as a result of their further analysis, is a recommendation for the establishment for the multifamily housing, and we did, after, uh, discussion and, and recommendation, uh, vote to approve to the full board, uh, the establishment of, uh, point six, uh, of one ERU for the establishment of multifamily housing. The documentation is in the book, if further explanation is necessary, I'd call on, uh, the guys from Cedar Corp. to do that, I think it's pretty straightforward, we did indicate at, at the previous meeting that we would do that, so for purposes of, uh, discussion, if there is any, George, I would move, uh, consistent with what we did, uh, at Public Works, to, uh, recommend the establishment of point six ERUs per unit, uh, as the multiplier for the limited multiple residential structures, uh, in the village.
Could we add, based on the, um, thirty-five hundred square, square feet ERU, so that we know what it's sixty percent of?
Sure. Okay. Consider that I said that.
Okay. I'll second.
There you go.
I get nervous when I don't hear a second.
Do you think anything should be added to that, uh, if it just...
Perhaps, uh, that is for, uh, two, three, and fourplexes. That point six refers to two, three, and fourplexes, and then the idea is anything above that, and then any other use, such as commercial, industrial, institutional, would be on a case-by-case basis.
Would the terminology limited multi-residential structures suffice to clarify that it's the fourplexes?
Yes, that's what we consider, two, three, and fourplexes.
Okay.
So then the motion that Darrell read is appropriate?
Yes, 'cause I think he referenced limited multiple residential.
Yeah, mhm. Have we defined limited multiple residential in this, uh, document from you folks?
Yes, that is defined in there.
It's actually in the third paragraph, where it decided the limited multiple resident will consist of duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, so it, it covers it.
You guys will be putting together an ordinance that covers all that, so it'll all be spelled out.
Okay, pretty good. I'm gonna suggest that this is not a spending issue, so I think we could go with just a simple voice vote. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this at this time? If not, I will ask all in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion passes unanimously.
The next item that...
Excuse me, just, just so I, I'm clear, this is approval for the calculations, right?
For the ERU, right, for limited multiple residential dwellings.
And we have not gone through the processes, say we're actually going to set it up?
No, no.
That's as I understand it.
That's correct.
We're, we're waiting for...
Thank you.
You got one more?
Got a couple more. We, uh, Agenda Item Number C, we did have a recommendation from our Public Works Director that, uh, sanitary sewer backup, uh, that occurred on Monroe Street was, uh, determined to be, uh, as a result of, um, difficulty in the, in the village line, and after the homeowner had, uh, some backup and called, uh, a private contractor to clean out their lateral, that did not alleviate the problem, it, it was in fact the, the village's responsibility. So the recommendation is to reimburse the cost of, to the homeowner of the cleaning out of the lateral, because it was the village that needed to, uh, unclog that, uh, that backup, and the amount is a hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, at, at this point, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move that, um, we reimburse the, uh, the homeowner the one hundred and seventy-five dollars for the, uh, for the private, uh, cost.
Second.
Any further discussion? Sorry, folks, but even for a hundred and seventy-five dollars, we need a roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Yes? Yes.
Yes.
Then we had another action item, and this also was, uh, an agenda item that came before this board last month, and then was referred back to, uh, Public Works for some additional analysis, um, a, after discussion, we did, uh, approve the recommendation of Public Works, uh, Director, uh, Mark Eckblatt, for the purchase of the basic plan on the, uh, on the lift here in the village hall at a cost of three hundred and seventy-five dollars on an annual basis. The three seventy-five will include the cost of the annual inspection, which we're required to do anyway, so that would be included in the cost, you'll recall when we looked at it here, there was, uh, another plan, uh, significantly more expensive, that included some other bells and whistles that on balance we felt, uh, was not necessary, and, uh, our recommendation for, to this board then, is to approve the, uh, purchase of the basic plan at an annual cost of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I so move.
Second. Any discussion, comments? There's a lot, a lot of discussion last time? Okay, Mark, you wanna start? I'm entertaining them.
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 And now your final...
And the final, the final item, uh, the street sweeping contract, for a number of years, the, uh, the street sweeping services have been provided to the village by, uh, McPhillips, uh, Inc., uh, we did send out a request for a proposal, uh, there was only one bid that was returned, uh, and it was from, uh, McPhillips, um, I don't think that this is, uh, an item where you get very many contractors that either have the, uh, equipment or the, uh, the interest, and the proposal back from McPhillips, Inc. is, uh, is really the, the same as what their cost has been, uh, previously, so at no increase in cost, and we recommend then to the village board the approval of the bid from, uh, McPhillips, Inc. for street sweeping services at a cost of eighty-six dollars an hour, and I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
It's an annual event. I need it on my street.
Well, we'll send it down.
Yeah.
Uh, what we have noticed, and Mark had commented on this, that, uh, we don't need as many hours anymore, now that we're not using sand there in the wintertime, and, uh, but we've been very pleased with, uh, Mike McPhillips, Inc., and his service, even on very quick notice, uh, comes out and helps us out, so I just wanted to put in a, a good word for a good contractor. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Jim, you're starting this one this time.
Yes.
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 Yes? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Darrell.
I'm done.
Hey, Joe, the floor is yours. Public safety.
We still don't have the engineer from the...
Okay, uh, actually, uh, I will not give an update, the meeting minutes, I think, are in your, your packet, however, Mark, could you lead us on this discussion of, uh, this Resolution Number two thousand and ten dash zero-two that we would like the board to approve this evening, in terms of the, well, background behind it, why we want to do it, and, uh, take it from there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe in the packets, you should have a copy of the Senate Bill, uh, before the State of Wisconsin Legislature, as well as the resolution that's been put together by, uh, the Public Safety Committee with the help of our attorney Terry, uh, going through and, and taking really some of the verbiage from the City of Franklin, uh, Resolution that was put forward earlier this year, in opposition of, uh, two thousand and nine Senate Bill five forty-eight, in two thousand and nine, in November two thousand and nine, this board put into place an ordinance, uh, restricting the residency of registered sex offenders with relation to child victims, as well as putting into place safety zones, uh, for those, those areas that were, uh, covered by the ordinance, which include schools, daycare providers, uh, any areas where children congregate, uh, which really in the village, uh, came down to, uh, the, uh, Bible Baptist Church, I think was the only one that was designated under that, that heading, um, and then of course parks, and, uh, and those types of recreation areas. The state senate right now has a bill before it, uh, Senate Bill five forty-eight, which basically, uh, and I'll read the, the summary, or part of the summary that, that reads, "This bill also prohibits a political subdivision, a city, village, town, or county, from enacting or enforcing an ordinance or resolution that specifically affects the placement of, or residency of, or areas that may not be entered or exited by a registered sex offender." So this bill goes, uh, I guess, in the face of the ordinance that was put in place in November of two thousand and nine, um, after reading through the information from the, the City of Franklin... After reading through the information from the City of Franklin, there have been, or there has been, a contested ruling, I guess, through a circuit court in a county in southeastern Wisconsin, which has been upheld by the circuit court, that ordinance was, in fact, legitimate, enforceable, and that information was in the Franklin Resolution. I didn't feel it was appropriate for us to reiterate the entire length and verbiage that was related in that, but basically to summarize and talk about in our ordinance or in our resolution, 2010-02, just referencing that there had been a challenge and it had been upheld by a circuit court. What the committee had put together with some discussion was really, I guess, twofold. One being that they were leery, or there was some discussion on how the board could be very leery of the fact that the state was trying to restrict the rights of local municipalities to regulate the health and safety of their citizens based on a statewide law that really, for the second fold, covers only those sex offenders that are currently on supervision, currently on probation or parole. It would not cover, the state statute would not cover, those sex offenders that then were not currently on supervision. There was a lot of discussion about that in November when we were talking about the passing of this ordinance. The people that are under the coverage and control of the Department of Corrections versus those people who maybe has moved from Florida, from Colorado, from some other state where they're still considered registered sex offenders, they have to register when they come into Wisconsin, but they're no longer under the, I guess, under the heavy hand of the Department of Corrections from that state or our state. And so there was some concerns about the fact that this doesn't cover the state statute or the state bill that's in front of the senate doesn't cover or doesn't even discuss those issues, because, of course, they don't, it's really the Department of Corrections that seems to be pushing this particular bill. Questions on that?
And I guess we discussed this, but I was thinking, what are the reasons for the state's bill? You know, why are they passing that? I mean, they're not trying to lay the heavy hand on the city, but they have problems when the cities do it.
I think that there's some, without being one of the representatives that's actually sponsoring this bill, I think that there's some discussion within the Department of Corrections on the fact that there are several municipalities putting these types of ordinances into place, but they're not necessarily uniform. In the southeastern part of the state, when they first started putting these ordinances together, they were in the neighborhood of 1,000 feet or 2,000 feet, where our ordinance limits 200 feet. And so I think because there's some discrepancies between municipalities, the Department of Corrections is having a difficult time in trying to kind of keep track of, okay, if we want to try to place someone in the village of North Hudson, we have to remember it's 200 feet. If we want to place someone in the village of Hammond, it may be different. I know that most of the agencies within St. Croix County have tried to keep it uniform so that we're all talking about 200 or 150 feet, depending on the municipality, but there's no way of regulating that across the state from a Department of Corrections standpoint. So I think the push really comes from the Department of Corrections trying to say, you know, we have so many little things to keep track of, we don't necessarily want this to be one of them, that we have to keep track of individual municipalities and what their distances are and those types of things.
Yeah, I was thinking the other discussion that we had was, in terms of the issues with the state, was, you know, if they had 1,000 feet from any kind of playground or area where children congregate, if they passed that, say, in the eastern part of the state in many of these places, that would mean, then, that there would be no place for these sexual offenders to live. And so then what that would, what they're concerned about, if I'm correct in our discussions, was that the people, the sex offenders would go underground. They wouldn't register, they'd just vanish. And so the idea is to track them, so the state is trying to do that, but at the same time, the village was, the village also was thinking about that when we passed our ordinance, and that's why we limited it to 200 feet. If we would have said 1,000, well, that would have meant nobody could come into North Hudson. So we were cognizant of that fact, and so that's how we wrote our ordinance, and now the state is basically saying, well, you can't have any ordinances at the village level, at least that's what they're saying. And what we want to say to our legislatures is say, listen, here's where we stand on that particular bill. We would like the opportunity to have our own local ordinance relating to this particular subject, and therefore, that's the reason for that letter and that resolution that Mark and Terry have written, that we would like to get the board approval for. So, too much other discussion, I guess I move that we adopt the Resolution Number 2010-02.
Second.
George, I just might say that SB 548 has been introduced in the state senate, but my understanding from context that I've made is that this is unlikely to pass the senate. I think the resolution that we have in front of us is entirely proper to express our opposition to SB 548, but it does not look like this is likely to pass the senate.
And I think that, I've heard some of the same rumblings, unfortunately, I have to be careful knowing the state's legislature and some of the things that we've been promoting through other organizations that I've been a part of, that some of those promises, depending on the political nature of things, can sometimes fall short. So I think that's why this resolution, just basically, given the opposition, at least we've made our peace, if for whatever reason it does pass and it goes through, we will obviously abide by it and make do with what we have and try to make, I guess, probably put into place something that then does cover those non-DOC parole, probation type sex offenders and work with it with whatever means we need to. Just to, I guess, piggyback with what Joe had mentioned, there was a Supreme Court ruling that said that you cannot prohibit, in the totality of the municipality, sex offenders from moving in, and so that's, again, why we did adjust that, those numbers. And I guess my last comment would be, with relation to these ordinances, they really have not been in place for a great deal of time, and I think in the City of Franklin, if I remember correctly, it's been in place for about three years, and so it's really difficult for anyone to say, one way or another, that it's been very helpful to municipalities for the safety aspect, or if it's sending people underground, which I think what a lot of the people at the Department of Corrections are using as their push for this particular bill.
Well, Mark, there's no doubt in my mind, a lot of work went into this, and if the board approves this resolution, I will be in tomorrow to sign the document, and it will be mailed off postface.
Maybe it's assumed that we will forward this to our legislative delegation, to Senator Harzendorf and to our three state representatives, but it's not specifically in here that we would do that. I would think it may be appropriate, in the now, therefore be it resolved, to say, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to State Senator Harzendorf and to our three Assembly members.
What has been done in the past, Becky, correct me if I'm wrong in this, but I remember seeing some cover, when we send out a resolution such as this, Becky puts a cover letter with it, and I think, do you sign it, I forgot, do you sign it or I sign that cover letter?
I, we can work that out, either one is fine, but we did that on that cable television legislation, where we copied our resolution to our representatives.
Just so that it's known.
Yep, we, yeah, we can sure do that.
Wait, are you suggesting...
I'd make that, I'd make, you know, if he wants to amend the motion, I would accept that, accept an amendment to the motion.
Well, I'm used to seeing that, when we pass a resolution at the county, we specifically indicate that a copy will be forwarded, so if it's appropriate, I would even move to amend by including that language in the, at the end of the paragraph that starts, now therefore be it resolved.
Yep, that's good.
Okay. I accept the amendment for the addition.
Becky, do you have that?
Yes, for the, those paragraphs, starting with now therefore be it resolved, to then that, maybe add to that, that we will, this will be copied to our state senator and our local legislature.
Do you want to spell out the names on there?
No.
Or just their...
I don't think that's necessary.
I would agree, I just want to make sure that when we send this off, that the resolution does or does not have names, and that was what your choice was. All right, any other discussion?
We still have a second, right?
Yep. But Mark still...
Mark seconded.
Yeah.
Since it's been amended, I think he has to renew his second.
He said yes.
Yes.
And because this is a resolution, because this is a resolution, I need a roll call vote, this time we'll start with Mark.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You know, one other thing, while you were up there, Mark, as part of our board packet, there was, I think, some legislation that was talking about indoor smoking ban in Wisconsin. I don't know if you wanted to spend a minute to talk about that, or...
The only thing I'll preface that with is that in the April Public Safety Committee, it will be an agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's not on tonight's agenda, but no. That'll be at the May meeting?
It should be at the, it should be at the May board meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
I think the only reason it felt legitimate to bring it up is because it's stapled to the, the chief's report.
Well, and it was part of the meeting minutes, I think.
Yes, it is. All right. I know, what do you think, Mike?
Would you like me to do the chair update?
Nah, let's wait till the end.
Yeah, no. If you'd like.
Yes, I'd love to have it, Mike, go right ahead.
The Plan Commission had a meeting on Wednesday, March 17th. There were two items, they both involved public hearings. They both were related to an extraterritorial subdivision out in the town of Hudson. There was a simple, straightforward one, and there was one that went on a little more. So we'll start with the simple one, as we did in the meeting. The developer wants to create a two-lot extraterritorial CSM at 338 Cradley Lane, and basically, there's one existing house on this big piece of property that they want to develop, and for various reasons, they want to sell off the house, and so they wanted to split that one off all by itself now, so they can get it closed before the end of April, or probably for the tax reasons, whatever, so they could get that done. And then the rest of the big acreage would be an outlot, and then that was what Item Two was about. So we opened it up for public hearing, there were no comments, we closed the public hearing, and it was pretty straightforward, we approved it unanimously, to let them split off that little house, or at least our part, it's extraterritorial again, but we had no objections with it.
Had the town of Hudson approved that also?
President Klein, throw me over there.
Yeah. President Klein, do you hear that?
I think, I think we might want to just get an answer to that, a yes or no answer to that question.
Just yes or no?
Well, just before we move on, though, yeah.
I'll introduce myself and then yes or no.
John Perotti with SEH. The answer is the Plan Commission at the town had forward a recommendation for approval, and the town board is meeting tonight as well. So that hasn't yet been decided.
Thanks.
I was at that meeting, and in fact, I had to leave before they were done. John, you may be familiar with John Sonatag from SNN, he stayed back there to help them with that discussion, and I came here because I understood we were going to be on the agenda shortly, so there's not been action taken as of when I left the meeting.
Just sit right there, thank you. Be back.
So, I think that requires action from you.
Yeah, although you should probably, the way our agenda is set up, is you're going to give your update, and then that's...
Okay, you just go to Part Two, and then you can take it, okay.
Finish your update.
Okay. And then the second one was, so on the outlot that's left, 32.4 acres, they're proposing a 26-lot subdivision, again, at 338 Cradley Lane. And you just said that the town of Hudson happens to be meeting tonight also on the same topic, but we had gone through the concept review in the fall of 2009, we talked about that here last winter, and so now we had the preliminary plat hearing, and so that was a public hearing, and there were lots of people here, and from what we found out was, whereas our village is very good of notifying people in the immediate area about all sorts of things, these people said they didn't know anything about. And so this was their opportunity to complain, to express concerns about things they didn't like, because they didn't do it at the Town of Hudson Plan Commission meeting that had been previous.
Were they residents of the Town of Hudson or village residents?
They were, I think they were almost all town residents.
So they were not, actually, their complaints should have been held at the town meeting.
Yes, yes, and like they said, they wish they would have got the letter from the town, just like they got the letter from the village, saying this was going to come on.
Just want to be clear that the complaints you're referring to were not from village residents.
That's correct, that's correct. Again, this is extraterritorial, and as Terry explained to everybody before we got started, what we were trying, what we do, what our legal role is, is to look at it from a subdivision point of view and make sure that between their rules and our rules, the most stringent apply and in anything else that impacts it. And so when they started going to lot size, all this, I think, we said, we have a 13,000 square foot lot size, township has one acre, that's more restrictive, they're one acre, so there's nothing to say about that. But bottom line, then, it all came down to more traffic on Cradley Road and water runoff. Kevin pretty much answered all those kinds of questions. As a matter of fact, he even had some traffic numbers from grocery store stuff. What we didn't have at the time was how it compares to the rest of the city streets, you know, it's not that bad, but when you give traffic numbers to people who aren't engineers, it sounds like a lot of cars going by there. And so anyway, we did not, when we voted, we did not approve the preliminary plat, it was a split decision, and so what did get approved was, let's table it and see if the Village Board can work with the township and fix up the thing with Cradley Road. Well, and further legal review, I don't know, Terry, if you want to just mention some of the things you did, or do that later.
Well, what I would say there is that actually, the vote was to table, whether or not to table, and they voted to table it.
They voted to table.
So that issue just goes back to the Planning Commission next month, because they tabled it. It doesn't come to us, in fact, it won't ever come to us, I don't think, because unless...
It's just a preliminary plat, yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't know that at the time.
If, pardon?
Once it gets to the final plat, it will come to the board.
The preliminary plat would not come to the board, but right, before it came to the final plat, it would come before the board, yes. But again, as Mike said, our only role here is to make sure that our subdivision ordinance is met. Most of the concerns by the town residents weren't about the regulations in ours, in, in fact, I would say all of them.
I don't understand why it was tabled then.
I think at the time, at least I didn't know that some of the Plan Commission members, I voted no, some of the Plan Commission members thought, well, yeah, they have some concerns with the traffic, and eventually Cradley Road is in the village, and so we should talk to the village, the town, and let's talk about it, and so it was like kicking it to the board, but now we find out, or it doesn't get it anyway, so it's coming back to Plan Commission next month, and we have a little more information, and Terry can give a little bit more legal direction of what we should be doing. It won't be a public meeting, and...
Well, and usually, these items are approved by the town and the county prior to us proving them, so that all of their issues are worked out.
Yes.
It doesn't look very well for us to approve something ETZ that's not in our municipality when they may have some objections that, or critical issues that haven't been worked out yet. That's, in the past, it's always been that we do it after it's been approved.
But we did get, you know, that it did meet legal requirements of lot sizes and things like that for the township.
This particular topic isn't on the agenda either, so really, Mike, I think all we can really do is you give your update, and then we move on from that.
So anyway, that's the update, and we're going to be looking at it again next month. We will have an April meeting, this is your April meeting, and so I'll be talking to you in May of what happens, and just to inform you where it is at that point.
I follow you on that.
Okay? And that's all we had. Any other questions? And usually, extraterritorial isn't that involved, it was a rather late meeting for us.
At the end of this item here, you just were talking about Item B on the agenda, correct?
All this was Item B. Item A was the very first one with the...
Most of what he was just talking about was not related to Item B. Item B is simply the two, the two-lot, there were two things brought before the Plan Commission, a two-lot split and a larger subdivision. a two-lot split, and a larger subdivision approval. The two-lot split, the Plan Commission approved, and recommended it to the board. The larger subdivision approval, the Plan Commission tabled it.
And we will address it next month, the larger one.
And my comment was in reference to both, this item and the other item. Becky, did you get confirmation that the town and the county had approved that? Or was that also on their agenda for tonight?
The town, the town is meeting on it tonight, same as, as, at the same time as this meeting, that's why Mr. Perotti was late. But apparently, that approval has not, at this point, has not been given one way or the other by the town. The county doesn't, the county's process is a little bit different, they have this review committee, it has gone through the total review committee at the county, it'll go through a second meeting with the county, and then I believe it would be approved or, or denied sometime later.
Gloria, are you suggesting that these meetings were held prematurely?
I, I know it's, it's a catch-22 to get these things approved, and it's very difficult on the developer when we're waiting for the town, and then the town boots it back and says, well, we need the villages, but on a normal basis, we normally say that it goes through the town, and they approve it before we do. That's normally the way it's been done in the past.
But, but the town Plan Commission had approved it, the preliminary plat, before it came to us.
My primary concern is having people come to meetings when they don't need to, and sitting through most likely several hours of meetings that they don't have to. And with that in mind, I am, that's why I'm asking, because it sounds like they've been to a couple already, and will have a couple more to go through for North Hudson, for an ETZ exercise, which this is the first time I've ever seen one labored like this.
And actually, timing-wise, like Gloria said, the township's Plan Commission did approve it, if they would have more clearly notified their residents, all those people would have been there the week before, and I don't think we would have seen that many people.
With all due respect, they were at a wrong meeting.
Yes.
And as, as, I understand the pressure you're under to oblige them, but there's not a thing you can do as a North Hudson Planning Commission chairman...
We told them on more than one occasion.
I think that it's...
And we limited discussion to three to five minutes per person, there were just a lot of persons.
Well, I think that's awfully generous of you.
I think it's more a matter of notification requirements than it is really timing in this situation. The village is required by ordinance to notify the adjoining landowners of the development, and the town does not have that requirement, so the town did not notify any of the residents, we did, and that's why they came to our meeting.
All right, that's fine, but I'm still looking at a scenario where Gloria is implying that we had held a meeting prematurely.
In this case, the developer asked for a parallel review process of this, and so that's what we were trying to accommodate.
Trustees, that was partly in response to comments we got from this group the first time through with the, with the concept review. Whether it was specifically the board of trustees or the Plan Commission, I'm not sure, because I was not here for those meetings, but Mr. Sonatek was. And there was quite a bit of feedback from representatives of North Hudson that, you know, we don't appreciate you approving everything over here in the town, and then coming to us after the fact, basically saying, here's an approved thing now, sign on. And so, we were trying, I guess as best as we could, however awkwardly it came out here at the end, to keep those processes as close to one another as possible, to try and accommodate everyone. And, and in doing so, I apologize if we got out of order, but it was really our intent to kind of make it as parallel and as, as possible. Just for some insight on the timing of the CSM, which I do believe is something you could act on tonight, is that correct? I'm looking to Terry for some...
Two-lot split.
Yeah, the two-lot split. The reason for getting, keep, putting that in front of you at the same time, or I should say, your Plan Commission at the same time as the plat, preliminary plat, is so that there's some, some reference there, where we can see that the two lay on top of one another perfectly. But the, one of the main motivating factors for moving the CSM forward, from the landowner's perspective, is that there is an interested buyer, and there is, as folks who track these things know, there's a deadline coming up with respect to the first-time homebuyer's tax credit, and that will expire. I think you have to have a signed agreement at the end of April, and then you have to close by the end of June, if I remember that right, I'm not a real estate person, but that's one of the main motivating factors to getting the CSM moving. And we are, we made the investment in the preliminary plat at the same time, to hopefully demonstrate to anyone who might be trying to compare the two, that they do in fact match perfectly, and that we won't be back asking for another split or something to make that new lot fit into the plat. Thank you.
Stay up there for a moment. We have the suggested motion, have you seen it?
I have not.
Okay, I'll read it.
Okay.
And see if this meets the criteria, I'm sure it does, but I want to verify it before we actually make it. The motion is to approve the application for a two-lot extraterritorial CSM containing one 32.4-acre lot, and one 1.06-acre lot at 338 Cradley Lane in the town of Hudson, PIN 0201002-50-040, applicant John Perotti, NWP Holdings LLC. Is that sufficient?
From memory, I can't vouch for the PIN number.
We wouldn't expect it to.
The rest of it, it sounds consistent with what we're hoping for tonight.
Oh, I have no doubt that Becky got that number right.
Nor do I.
Okay. All right, consider that motion having been made by me, I'll look for a second.
Second.
Terry, any further comments on this?
No, no, no other comments on this two-lot. The Plan Commission looked it over real well, Kevin made a lot of comments, everything looks very good.
Okay. Does the board have any comments or questions on this? I will be the first to recognize that there's a discomfort level about approving something that is outside of what we would normally consider our purview. However...
I will make a comment to that.
Go ahead.
It is, it is our purview to approve plats within a mile and a half of our border.
Right.
You've done it before. Yeah, what I'm saying is it just, it's...
Yeah.
Okay, it's not the village. So, yeah, I understand in this case, but it just seems funny. All right. A lot of deep thought I see here. Do we have any questions?
No, we're ready to vote.
Ready to vote?
Do you have a second?
Call a motion.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Do we need a...
Okay. All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Yes, that's it?
Thank you, President Klein, trustees, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public welfare, we've got a couple of dates here that you're going to give us, right, Jim?
Yeah. We did have a public welfare meeting, and have come up with the fact that the date for the spring leaf collection, the free curbside spring leaf collection will commence May 3rd, and will potentially take two to three days, but I want it to be emphatic and clear that all the bags must be placed out curbside by 6:30 a.m. Monday, May 3rd, so that I don't have to drive down the streets looking at bags left from fall leaf pickup, so please...
Jim, are those the ones with the orange tags?
Yeah.
The old ones?
Yeah.
Okay, so what color are the new tags, the Veolia's?
Well, there won't be any tags, but all of the new bags have to be biodegradable. I'll just go through this, bags must be biodegradable plastic bags, or craft paper bags. Anything not biodegradable will sit until they are repackaged into the proper containers. So, prior to May 3rd, anybody that's got leaves out has to unbag those and put those in the appropriate ones. We made this crystal clear last fall, and most everybody got it, except for a handful of people.
Well, you know that even on your own street, there were some of those black bags with the orange tags.
I've noticed.
Yeah, you couldn't miss them, you'd pass by them every day. So my question is, how can you tell, when you look at a black plastic bag, whether or not it's biodegradable?
Well, a biodegradable bag is about as thick as a balloon, unfortunately, so if you can't see the leaves inside of it, you know it is not a biodegradable bag, for the most part, unless somebody comes up with something from the time we started this meeting, until I go shopping again tomorrow. The other option is craft paper bags, which are a paper bag that decomposes. Both of these bags are going to prove to be challenging, I will just say, to homeowners. It is not like the days where we had a contractor bag, and you could jump on it and stick them full of whatever you wanted to. These things are delicate, the paper bags do not expand when I own them, and they're, they come with their issues. I'll leave it at that, it's, it's a, it's a situation. I don't think that anybody thought this thing through thoroughly, but we have to abide by the laws. So, back to the date, May 3rd, curbside leaf pickup. Then also, we will be having on May 8th, up at the village car wash, thanks again to Mark Zappa, we'll have our spring bulk item drop-off from 8 a.m. to 2 p.m. All of the residents of Hudson will be getting a letter from Veolia, that basically summarizes everything that I just said. Additionally, on the back of that letter, I believe, did we put that together, Becky, that there will be a, a cost chart for the cost of bulk items dropped off up in North Hudson? So everybody can be pretty well aware of what their costs will be before they load up their vehicle to drop things off. Also, one other brief note, Veolia, as we had negotiated in the contract for village residents, offers a service for yard waste pickup. I feel it's relatively cost-effective, it's $23.40 per subscription for the season. What that means is they will give the residents a 96-gallon container, same size as our large trash container, they will pick it up with leaves, grass clippings, anything you want, weekly for the entire season, for $23.40. When you compare that to a $1.50 per biodegradable bag with a sticker on it, I think that the, the options are pretty much white and black there, so everybody keep that in mind. And with that, that's pretty much about it, about trash talk, I have to just cover this. Rain barrels, again, Baldwin wants residents, the world wants residents to capture rain in barrels, so that you can contain it and water your gardens and things. I feel it's a great idea, but with our limited staff that we have in the village currently, we are going to ask residents who do want these to contact Baldwin and just pick them up directly through them. And we appreciate their attention to the world, but we are just a little short with village staff time, so we're going to ask that.
Did you say contact Baldwin, Jim?
Baldwin, yeah, oh, I'm sorry. There is in the four, the, what do I call it, area out here?
North Texas?
Four year.
Four year.
Vestibule.
Four year, vestibule.
Lobby.
Lobby.
Lobby would be good.
Outside Becky's window.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm, I'm starting to lose my voice, but the vestibule, there is a, there's a notice of how to do that, or anybody can contact Gloria or Becky, and I'll get them the information to do that. Want to help me out here, Becky?
That information is also updated on our website.
Thank you.
You know what, just for anybody listening, what the cost of that is to the homeowner?
I think they're $30 now, yeah, and that's with all fittings and attachments, and it basically does everything except add your flowers to that. And with that, we had a great meeting, which we'll cover more at a later date. I'm done.
You're done?
Done.
Then that, if you're done, then that would mean that Colleen's up.
I'll try to be quick. We had, the main things the park board is continuing to work on is the grant application for purchasing the railroad property in hopes of getting a bike pedestrian path. As part of the requirements, the DNR requires that the park and recreation plan be adopted by resolution. This board has approved our plan, so it's really just a matter of the wording to, so we have the formal resolution, which is why this is coming before you again. So, do I read the whole resolution? Dash, two, 2010-dash-03.
Yeah, I think you can get by with just reading the, the emboldened stuff at the top.
Resolution adopting the 2008, 2013 Village of North Hudson Outdoor Recreation Park Plan. And it was passed and adopted by the village board, the village...
You better stop right there.
Oops, okay.
I'll move approval.
All right.
Okay. Terry, would you like to make a comment?
No, this is fine, I mean, you've already approved this, it's just a matter of putting it into the form of a resolution.
Right. Okay. Any questions? It's a resolution, so let's do a roll call, we'll start in this...
Was there a second?
Yes, Mark Zappa.
I moved, I seconded, yeah. Yeah.
Mark moved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I heard Colleen.
Process.
We've been here too long.
We'll start with Mark, go ahead. Do I hear an aye?
What? Yes, yes, of course.
Yes.
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 Do you have anything else, or?
No, we're just working on the grant application, which is due May 1st, and then we're also, the equipment for the playground in Chief Jansen Memorial Park will be installed this spring.
Very good.
And the grand opening and dedication will be later, probably towards September.
I did it beginning of January. Thank you, Billy.
Yep.
Just, Mark, we're not ready for you just yet, just a reminder to all board members, I said it at the outset of the meeting during the president's comments, but I'll reiterate, the village board reorg meeting is April the 20th at 7 p.m., right here in the very hall of wisdom and justice. All right? Mr. Zappa?
I'd like to make one note, just as a testimony to find chivalry, if you will, I'd like to grant Sandra the privilege of adjourning her final meeting.
Wow.
Wow.
But this would be monumental, I have to throw something in here, that Mark has to be a part of, that this is not only monumental, because this is the last time anybody will move to adjourn a meeting, correct? Am I right with that, Carol?
Yes, once we've completed the agenda, the chair can adjourn the meeting.
Well, yeah, but there's a certain tradition here, and Mark is relinquishing that to Sandra.
That's crazy.
Oh, absolutely, well, no, it's cool, it's all good.
So Sandra?
I move we adjourn.
Do I hear a sec? There we go!
Hey!
All in favor of adjourning?
I don't know, let's, let's talk about it.
All right.
See ya.
Yeah.
Do I hear a sec? There we go! All in favor of adjourning?
I don't know, let's, let's talk about it.
All right. See ya.
Yeah.
We're just talking about that because we, uh...